Yes. Okay, we'll get started. Yes. Okay, so today in your packet, I attached all of the links of all the times that we've talked about the Government Center space study that we conducted in 2021. And today, again, we're back to continue the previous or to continue the conversation with additional information and to provide some renderings of some hypotheticals to give you some visuals as to what some things could look like. So Von Peterson is here from TSP. He's the he's the guy who plays Tetris with all these things on them. On the computer, we've had continued conversations based on conversations that the board has had with us, based on conversations that we've had internally with staff. So I'll have him go through the the different phases that we haven't broken out into as to what the what the different steps could be for here in the Government Center, and then we'll wrap up with how we think we could move forward with some of the pieces to Phase One to the overall master plan of the Government Center. So with that, I'm gonna pass it off to Von.
Awesome. Well, thanks, Stacy. Yeah, like Stacy mentioned, we've been working for a couple of years now, I think, just kind of looking at the Government Center and some of the concerns in regards to space needs, security, accessibility, and as Stacy has kind of linked up some of the conversations we've had there. Really, to summarize my objective here today is, yeah, one is to summarize again sort of where we're at today within the Government Center. Two, what that vision is that we're kind of looking to move towards. And then finally, I think where the bulk of the conversation can be is just what that implementation strategy looks like. And in your packet, kind of showing a Phase One, Two, and Three, along with some visuals again, and I do want to emphasize that they're conceptual visuals. It's by all means, just a way to to understand what it could be. At the end of the day, it could be really anything that is desired. So. So the first step there is just looking at the kind of existing what we've got. The first eight pages of the document that you have there and that are up on the screen are simply just documenting the existing layout as well as the existing department configuration in terms of where the departments are at within the building. And so I think that just helps to give a baseline of where we're at. That's the first four pages. The the second four pages, I'll get to that here, these are just what we call existing constraints. Not really much to look at there. These are really just diagrams for us to understand where there are some critical components within the building that as we're doing space planning, we understand that we can't take out a column, for example, or you could, just costs a lot of money. And so we just want to, we put that in there just as a as a reference for us as well as for you, for that matter. I think there's a couple of things to note, and again, this will likely be a summary from what we've discussed before. But one, that the existing building has some security concerns, primarily that if someone gets into the building, they can really go anywhere. You know, there's not necessarily a lot of barriers slowing anyone down as they move through the building, all four levels of the building. To a lesser extent, accessibility concerns. Obviously, we've got an elevator. We do have an accessible entrance. But the four, I'll say, primary entrances, the the original entrances, those are non-accessible with stairs that are leading up to them within the the Government Center. And what that causes some issues is the fact that it is a historic building. Making those entrances accessible is very challenging, one, feasibly, technically, trying to get a ramp or something up that high. But also just trying to make it look good, make it look nice, and make it look like it fits with the building. And then the last thing I think to note is that within the existing building, there is space. There there's capacity in the building for either A, moving some departments around, which is something that we'll kind of talk about here in a bit, and or for growth or otherwise. Ultimately, there is capacity, there's room to have some flexibility and adaptability to kind of work through this this phasing to get to where to where we want to be. Before I jump into the the phasing plans, I think the next thing we want to talk about is just what that vision was or some of the conversations that we've had as far as moving forward. I think one is to was to create an obvious main entry to the building. Right now, we have you have signs kind of sitting around the building stating to directing folks to to the Fifth Street entrance, directing people that way, and then it's ultimately, you know, entering in on the lower level. But wanting to make an obvious main entry to the facility. The second would be to create a central services model. And really, what that means is that there would be a location near the main entry where most visitors could come in for transactions and handle a lot of their business, kind of in that one spot. As you know, currently, they may go to other departments, and there's certainly times when folks would need to go to other departments. But that access would be more controlled and we, you know, there'd be more control ultimately as folks get into the building, again, just from a security standpoint, limiting the amount of folks that are throughout the building. And then last would be to adjust the department locations within the building in order for those that have more customer interaction to be closer to that main entry. So again, even as folks are coming into the building, they are closer to the main entry. Again, it really just trying to help with that focusing, if you will, of the monitoring and the security of the entry into the building. So before I get into what the implementation sort of plan or some phase suggestions that we have, is there any questions about the existing building where we're at today or or that vision of where where we'd like to go?
Yeah, tons of questions, but no, keep going.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, fair enough. All right. So the next page is here. Right now, I'm on page nine of the document. Up in the upper left-hand corner, so it helps define where we're at. So this is the lower level floor plan and Phase One of what we're suggesting as the first step here. So the first step here, and see if I can zoom in, is really try, is I will say the low-hanging fruit. And really, what that is, is adjusting some of the department locations so that those departments that may have more customer interactions are a little bit closer to what is the main entry, given that the the doors on the main building are locked at this point. So what Phase One is showing here on the lower level is that Vet Services would be relocated down to where Tim is currently at or kind of the maintenance area. There is some remodeling that would likely have to occur in that area. However, it's it's relocating them from a space needs. It fits them pretty well. We're also suggesting that 4H is relocated down there where the current kind of or the existing driver's DMV space was at. Again, from a space needs standpoint, as well as, you know, they have a lot of access in and out of the building with materials and otherwise. And it's it's adjacent to the the ramp and what have you that's inside the building there or right next to them over in this this space. And again, the intent there is that there may be some remodeling that's necessary to accommodate that, but in a lot of ways, it's relocating them and into a newer a newer space. There we go. On the, so again, this is the first level floor plan within that same phase. On this one, the green area in the upper right-hand corner, that's that, let me make sure I'm, yeah, that would be kind of land use management. So the expanding land use management into that area adjacent to their current space and just providing providing some additional space there. Again, this one really is just reutilizing a lot of the existing walls and otherwise. The space is already finished and getting them moved in there. The second would be facilities moving up to the main level to where Vets is at. Again, that's primarily, Tim and his crew don't get a lot of visitors, and so moving them to a different location, allowing vets to have better access to the to the community is a big part of that adjustment there. And then last is shifting IT up as well. The server would remain where it's at. But the and and it was discussed that they don't need that hard adjacency with the server, but that moving them up again, to provide them with some additional space that they need as far as just a staffing, storage, and otherwise. And so what I'll do here, too, is I will, there's three phases I will talk about. I'll go through and summarize those, and then we can certainly go back and and talk in any more detail about how that all is. But really, this first phase, and again, is intended to be the low-hanging fruit. It's adjusting some department locations and really starting to see how it might work with with that layout. Phase two is a little bit, certainly a little bit more work, and as we move towards implementing that central services model. So the plan that I have up in front of me here on page 11 is the lower level floor plan, part of Phase Two. This is showing a couple of things. One is remodeling of that lower level where people currently are coming in, one to be, I think, more inviting as well as providing a service counter there as well. It opens it up quite a bit in order to allow, you know, have that circulation, have the queuing space necessary for folks that would come. We also are adjusting the meeting room in that area. So again, there's the public access to a larger gathering space on that main level. And we'll also see down here, we have a smaller meeting room. That's intended to be, you know, if folks do need to come down for a smaller meeting, you know, folks from different departments could come down here and sit with them there and be able to to plug in, etc. The other part of this as well is an expanded entry plaza. And again, that's kind of going towards that, trying to make a very obvious main entry that's inviting. We do have some renderings that I'll show here in a second, but so really, the idea here is that we expand the entry plaza to make a define a discernible main entry. We implement that central services model where folks will be able to have a number of their transactions happen there. Provide some additional meeting space down here, again, for any meetings that may be necessary, as well as, as you can see in the red, the integration of some card readers or card access. And that would just allow for staff and otherwise and controlled access between different areas of the building that public folks don't necessarily need to be into, and you can really program those anyway that you need to. So to just give you an idea of what this central services model, as well as this expanded entry plaza, will start to look like or a potential to look like. I'm on page 18 now that just shows a site plan. That just gives some idea of what we were thinking as we were pulling this together. Gotta get used to the the zooming. Nope, it's all good. From a plan standpoint, as you can see here, that the plaza is expanding quite a bit. It really makes an obvious entry for the facility, trying to bring folks off of West Avenue and Fifth Street towards that towards that main entry. There's also some reconfiguration of, I'll say, the main, the main walkway up to the front of the building. Again, that's a non, it's going to be locked. The intent is that that door will be locked and that folks are not able to go through there. So but people still need to leave the building. They're still exiting that is required. And so reconfiguring that a bit so that it moves people towards the main entry. As we start to look at it from a rendering standpoint, again, these are just conceptual in nature. It is certainly not necessarily saying that this is exactly what it's going to be. But as you can start to see, we're trying to keep it relatively, it's big, and it certainly makes more of a presence. But we're also trying to make it tie in with the existing building, just knowing the historic nature of the building, but also making it functional with the with what is needed. We provide a collection of images here, trying to give you just different viewpoints from the site about how that that main entry or that main entry plaza may start to come together. And we'll see, kind of, we we put some bollards up there again, so that folks aren't able to drive, drive cars in there. Those would be able to to stop vehicles or otherwise that may jump a curb or otherwise. And again, just considering some of some of those needs as well. We also understand, and you start to kind of see it in some of these, you know, obviously, there is a historic nature to the building. And so trying to keep the materiality of the plaza cohesive with it, but also with that entry piece itself is providing a little bit higher level of detail, again, to to make it not just necessarily a hole in the wall in the side of the building. The other images that we have here on page kind of 25 through 28 are just some generic, I'll say, images of what that central services model might look like. So this one is, is, you know, as you walk into the building, what it would look like. The ceiling is a little bit lower in that area, but there's certainly nice space there, I think, for a lot of queuing and folks to to circulate and move around, either access the transaction counter, go into a meeting, or if they need to enter into the main Government Center, allowing them to do that as well. And again, just a couple of other perspectives. This one's also at the main entry, kind of looking towards that meeting room that we that was mentioned. And this is kind of taking it from the other corner, kind of from the meeting room over. So as you can see, there's a nice space there, and I think to to serve the needs of the customer, but also not to get constricted with congested with foot traffic and otherwise.
You got a card reader on that room going to the veterans, so they would actually be buzzed so that someone's coming into the door, so they
Correct.
Always somebody has to let them to the next.
Yes, exactly. Yep. And that can be done in two ways, either by a buzzer, and then they go through, or if, because Vets is right there, and a lot of times, I know that, you know, they can come forward to sort of greet the visitor and kind of usher them back as well. And move up here to.
To redesign the front of the entrance, do we have to go through the City of Rugwing?
Yes.
The Heritage, the Heritage Preservation Commission, we would, that would be an application to them, and they would need to approve anything that we do.
Yeah.
We've been through that process.
Don't get too wild. It's, they're good to work with.
I think we went through the process with the addition to the Citizens Building.
Perfect. Now, looking at Phase Three. Zoom in here. We're on the lower level again. Wait, we're on the lower, we're on the first level. I'm sorry. The first level, excuse me. So on the first, the other item when we mentioned accessibility, I think from a circulation standpoint, we're good. However, we also understand that some of the toilets in the facility are not accessible. They have a step up. And so part of this Phase Three is not only adjusting some of the department space to adjusting some of the department space configuration, but also implementing the accessible restrooms, mother's room, and additional card readers. So on the first level here, next to where what is shown as where maintenance would be and where 4H is currently at or extension, is making a mother's room as well as an ADA toilet on that level. We would be maintaining the existing toilets, but ultimately providing that accessible option in addition to the the existing toilets. In the land use management area of of centralizing kind of a service counter for them. So if folks are coming up and into the building that there is, and that's kind of where that entry is at right now. This is the main entry to the building. Again, that would be locked. We would still need likely some exiting or the ability to exit there, but trying to control that access back into the department space as folks are coming into the building. And then again, card readers sort of, I wouldn't say throughout, but as indicated here. And that's primarily on that threshold between a public occupied space and a private, so to speak, space. And then this is, this is the third floor. So then kind of moving up to the floor that we are at now. And here, providing some controlled access between your your new boardroom over there and this room, so that that hallway that's connecting them would be secured, so that there is ability to circulate between these those two spaces. I'll say, which would be outside of the the main public occupied space, as well as a couple of accessible toilets. As we know, there's no accessible toilets on this third level. And again, some card reader, card readers implemented as well. And so these kind of final pages, and I won't, we'll get into these a whole lot. I think this is where we can open up the discussion, but it is just showing the phasing complete. So the the pages 14 through 18, I believe, are what it would look like if all three of those spaces were implemented, sort of how the the building would start to lay out. Again, those, from the studies that we've had, this is just sort of the initial sort of step towards towards it. And certainly, we want to open that up for discussion, conversation, curiosity, so whatever you might have, and and clarify anything that we can.
Thank you. All right, questions?
Well, one of my first concerns is on the lower level. In the public space, there's no restrooms. There's no access to restrooms. You got to get buzzed through to go to a restroom. That's a question.
Yeah.
Second thing is the one thing out of this that I'm looking for is security for staff. And the renditions of the open space in the basement do nothing about protecting the staff that are right there. One of my thoughts through this whole thing is on the first floor, you have basically two wings where staff are each direction. You get in the rotunda or the middle, you have all the spaces to either side. Why, why can't we put a service counter in that space so that everybody in this section over here to the to the one direction and to this section on the other, you have to come to a desk with bulletproof glass, whatever, and you get then let through to go to one of those, or you do your work at that service counter. We have blast doors everywhere in this building. None of them protect anybody. How are we, how are we going to address that on each level if we don't separate the workers from the public with some kind of hardened place without going through and trying to change every single door? That, that's one of my, so that can happen at the first floor, that can happen at the second floor, because everybody works off of those wings. Nobody goes off of the rotunda into a workspace. And then, you know, my concerns with the lower, at this level, there's only one workspace that you come through one spot, which we can harden that pretty easily. Those are my concerns. It is part of it's about you reusing space, but the biggest part of it is, what are we going to do to protect our employees? And I see that missing in a lot of places in here.
I can comment to that.
That's my concern.
I can comment to that, just that you know, yet we're yet in the infancy of knowing that we have these deficiencies that we need to do these things. Health and Human Services is an example of, we would take some takeaways as to how their front desk works and how they have their staff in the back, and they have locked doors and whatnot. How we would design that lower level central services concept. Those images truly were like hypothetical to give you an idea of what it could potentially look like. But knowing that we need to factor in all of those pieces that you're talking about. And we've implemented a lot of that over at HHS. We do still have some frontline staff that are right there. They have
Should be behind some hardened glass of some sort. I
Yeah, and we've actually, we've changed our front counter once already, and we're always open to, you know, making things better and safer for our staff. So those are definitely things that are to come yet on that piece.
And I think, going back to our Homeland Security review, that was one of the things, too, that is controlling access to the building was kind of that, you know, control those access points. You know, a better model is probably something more like Justice Center or even the Law Enforcement Center, where you have that that rotunda area with, they they are behind some glass there. And it, not to say that we couldn't do something like that at the lower level as well. But as far as how we let people access the facility, I mean, there's a number of ways to do that. I mean, if you had a visitor, you know, visitor badge, they could get through the building. I mean, there's, there's a number of ways to do that with with some of our access controls or which level they can go to on the elevator and those different things.
No, I, I, I know there's more to come. I understand.
Well, and that's
But I, I, those are just basic, the basic thing to me is if it doesn't address staff safety, then I'm not ready to just even move on square one. I like the, I like the the new access look. I like that. I like being able to come in there and and get directed where you need to go. But unless you have somebody that goes with them, once they get to second floor or the third floor, and everybody has stairs, we have stairs, open stairwells. Without closing open stairwells, how can we close off where you can go on that floor? You can still get to restrooms. You can still get go to all the floors, but you can't get past that rotunda area to go into any office space if we can harden it in those and not and not really change the look of the building severely. That's, I guess, where I'm at.
I would concur with the restrooms on that first floor, that when you come in, it seems to me there should be the ability to have a restroom as opposed to anybody could be buzzed in to use the restroom, and then you've got an unsecured building again. I also like the entryway. I think it's a very attractive entryway that encourages people to come in.
Is there any way, like, visitor badges, can they be chipped so we know where that badge goes throughout the building?
Yeah.
Yes. So if they don't turn that in, you know, there's a situation.
Yeah.
Or they throw it out the window, you know.
And we can deactivate that at the end of the day. So I think the idea would be to have a secondary, secondary level of access. So at that stairwell, you know, if we can control the elevator, then we know which floors people can go to. They can't access the elevator without having access. But then on the lower level where the employee entrance is, controlling that point, too, so people could not walk up to the second floor or the first floor without having access to that. So I think it's just some redundancies there to try to keep it mobile. You know, if we had a meeting or a big meeting down on the lower level, and we needed the restrooms, we could, we could program that door to be open, and they would only be able to access that lower level. So they would have access to the restrooms, the meeting spaces. And we would have the rest of the doors would be access or access control.
And basically, someone would have to make a decision to let them go beyond the central service space.
Correct.
So they presumably, and not that you pick up every single person, but presumably, if there was someone who was agitated or you felt uncomfortable with, you wouldn't buzz them through. That would not take care of every incident, but quite a few of them.
Yeah, I think the idea would be then, you know, we would have someone meet them in that space.
Yeah, I understand.
Bringing them inside or inside that employee space.
There comments?
I just had one question on the on the first level. I think land use would be moving across the hall. And is there an advantage to land use to do that? I mean, there's still some this, for Phase Three, maybe that's an advantage, because then
The intent for us to do that during Phase One was so that we had because that's part of the final phasing. So and moving IT up during the first phase is, you know,
You didn't want to move them twice.
Didn't want to move them twice. So it makes sense to, you know, move the one across the hall, and then everybody's where they're going to be once we get to that final phase, and then moving IT into the space there. And so really, not having to do it twice.
I understand.
And then longer term, it's the service counter is
I understand that, too, if that's, there'd be doors put into that service counter or
I don't know what the final layout would be, but you, both sides would be able to access that front counter.
Somehow.
Yep.
So I think as far as, you know, like, future, like, that's why we're here again today for additional discussion. You know, if the board is interested in us moving towards Phase Two, Phase Three, and actually becoming more detailed into what we're looking at and what we need to do and putting together some, and maybe I'm jumping. But you know, that's, that's a piece of this puzzle, that if the board is interested in moving through these phases, that we then we start working through the process as to what it would take to implement Phase Two. I think we have a pretty good understanding as to what Phase One is going to look like, what it could look like. And that really, it's just some movement of some people on this building and some minor construction to the lower level. But then, if the board is interested in the Phase Two, the central services concept, the changes to outside, and then what the final phasing could look like, then we start working towards building truly what that's going to look like. Having the conversations, having the meetings, doing the planning, moving to the, moving to the next step of this overall process. And then we start talking about what is our timeline to implement, and then how do we pay for it?
So I, the two, couple of questions that I wrote down was, one is, how do we fund it? Because as a board member, it's hard to keep approving things and then find out later, cost, you know, double or triple what what we thought it was going to, and then how do we pay for it? So that's always a concern. And then I, you know, when I talk to different departments, they've, some of them have suggested they would And then I, you know, when I talk to different departments, they've, some of them have suggested they would need more staff to be able to move to a central services. And I wonder if we have anything about if this would require more staff and if so, how many more staff? And then perhaps if I understood a little bit better about funding and how that might affect taxpayers and the levy, I could make a decision more easily.
And I, and I, those are all part of the, I believe, like some of the next phases of where we can get. You know, today's cost estimate, but we can have, you know, what we've done with like the citizens' building in the past is we had different scenarios that costed different options. And we came to the board with different options on how to fund them and.
Okay.
And before the board was supposed to move forward, those decisions were made.
We have some preliminary numbers on that. For the vets, the extension area, the other stuff is mostly maintenance moving stuff. And I'm not saying we're not going to need some new cabling and some new this and that, but that, that's fairly low level. There is, there is some cost in the vets extension area, but that phase one is is very, very limited cost.
And something that we could find out of.
Yeah, we've got building contingency and that's part of what that's for.
Yes.
We don't want to fund everything on a building contingency, but it's a problem. But and then stuff like the, you know, getting to where we have the more, you know, robust entryway down there. I mean, those are things where we'll have to get costs and things, but I think long term, I mean. The security is very important and I think it's also very important that our citizens know where, where it looks like they should be entering a building.
Right. Well, and, and I think accessibility is becoming more and more of an issue. So I.
Well, and some of the like the mother's rooms and stuff, I mean, the, those are, but they're actual laws now. I mean, it's, they're not optional. And in some buildings, we've basically remodeled a closet, which I think we can do better than that.
So moving forward means flooring. It doesn't mean us committing to buy more staff for a few million dollars. But that may mean that down the road if we want to go further forward.
I should have said more on the staff part. We haven't, we wanted to make sure you guys were interested in the, the concept before we spent a ton of time on. That, you know, the long term, who's going to be, who's going to be the central services staff down there? But we, we, from day one, we've thought that the, the higher touch areas should be, you should be able to at least access those down there. So.
Good question on bathrooms. I mean, existing bathroom, we're not going to try to make them handicap accessible. We're just going to add one.
Correct. Yeah.
That would be just be a one of them is all we need, gender neutral.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it would be a gender neutral accessible restroom and we would, you know, on the main level or on the first level, I should say, we have one. And then on the other levels, we have two. So there'd be two gender neutral restrooms on the, why should, let me take that back. On the first level and as well as the third level, there would be.
Yeah.
So like when there's meetings, there, there'd be a set like right, right behind this wall.
If there's an evening meeting, people don't have to want.
Restrooms.
Could be downstairs too. In that larger meeting room.
And I know it's all get down to cost, we have a lot to talk about, but why do we need two?
I think a lot of it is just the fact that it's particularly like on the third level, the, the number of people, it's really just to accommodate.
We already have, but we're not going to take, get rid of the other two, are we?
We're not. The issue is that they're not accessible.
Yeah. So if there's a public hearing in the evening in the new boardroom, it would be, would it be better to have someone using a bathroom on this floor than taking the elevator down to?
Right. And I have time putting one in, but why do we have to put two?
Well, yeah, and it, that's just a question whether we do one or two, but it's not only just gender neutral, but it's also that becomes a family bathroom. So you don't, you know, a dad does that, brings his daughter into the men's room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or vice versa.
Tim and John, plug your ears, but is there any issue with those offices in the. Lower level not having egress windows?
Uh, no.
Isn't?
No, not even, not having.
Zone from a code issue, that isn't?
No, there, there's the appropriate exiting through doors and otherwise, uh, when we design buildings of this, um, they don't necessarily look at the windows as a form of egress. And we've got a design in basically that they can walk out the door and have the, make sure there's the right amount of distance to the outside, et cetera, et cetera. So yeah, there are no issues there.
Here, as long as nobody sleeps there, right?
Yeah, to ground the point, right? Yeah, just don't be sleeping down there, I guess.
All right. What do you need from us?
I think we're looking for feedback. So I feel like we have the feedback that we should can, like, you're liking the central services idea. You're liking the idea of how we can make, you know, we can meet our constituents where they're at, how we can start looking at implementing services into the lower level. And if you're looking at, I'm hearing, let's start looking at the next phases and what they could cost us and what our options could be.
When you say, when you say central services, what are the examples of that? What, what departments would be represented in central services?
Central service? I think that's a piece of this puzzle yet.
Okay.
I mean, I think as, as we talk about the first phase, we talk about. You know, veteran service office going downstairs, extension going downstairs, facilities, maintenance coming up, IT coming up and land use going across the hall. Sorry, my hand motions. But it, but along with that, then I think the next piece of the puzzle is, I'm hearing the board's interested in the central services concept. And then it's the conversation amongst the departments who are within this building, along with the board, like what services would you like to see at the counter? If you walk in, do you want to be able to fill out a passport? Do you want to be able to pay your taxes? Do you want to, during voting season, do you want somebody available to take your absentee ballot? Those are all questions to be answered yet. And we need everybody to, to help us come to that conclusion, exactly what it looks like.
Cause I'm assuming with our computer setup, you could still be on the central services and still be working.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
He proved it during COVID that you could work at home, you can probably work on the lower level too.
It may need to change some of the ways we purchased technology for some of our employees because not everybody's mobile. People do have, you know, some, like I could take my surface and go anywhere else and work within the building or jump into a dock station. But some of the people who have PCs at their desk, they wouldn't be able to do that. But those will just be things that we need to work out as well, whether it's PCs or docking stations, how, how we're working in different locations.
Well, I, it would seem like we're interested enough to continue to pursue it, but not ready to make a decision. So.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't expect you to be ready to make a decision.
Lucas?
Yes, I just wanted to raise a couple of questions or comments and I don't need to speak out of turn here. And I know all this is very, depending what it is, it's preliminary. But I did want to bring up some items related to elections specifically in the services that we provide. So for phase one, moving the vests, I don't know the vests, but four H downstairs into the TBS room. Currently for elections, equipment pickup, the night before the election and also for drop off, the election night, we do utilize that space. So the night before, we use both the current IT conference room and that room. So all of those head judges can come and pick up, check out that equipment, everything that they're required. Use both those spaces and we can get that done within a couple of hours for all of those people to come in. If we lose that space, that six hundred twelve square feet, that TBS room, that will increase the. The overtime cost, if this is all done after hours, then I, for the election, we're going to be limited to using just that one space. And we're going to, it's just going to take longer to stage everything beforehand. Just wanted to bring that up.
If I can comment to that, the one space that we have down there that won't be utilized is when IT moves up out of their space. That space will be during phase one will be open. So.
That's a good point.
That, that's going to kind of be our, like, Tim may have to move there for a little bit. Well, you know, there's, there's going to be some pieces of the puzzle, but for the most part, the, the space where IT sits right now, by moving them up allows us to use that as flex space. For who, whoever needs, we're disrupting during that time, if that helps. Yeah, and we're, that's definitely an easy one to do. Yeah.
Additionally, with phase two, and obviously these are preliminary, things can change. I do have a concern with the current IT conference room, it's eight hundred eight square feet. It looks like that'll be replaced with a space that's six hundred square feet. We use that room not only for equipment pickup, but we also use that for the public accuracy test, with standards two weeks prior to each election. Apparently we use that entire space and it's tight. Depending on the specific election, they're all open as a public. Depending on the specific election, if you can get a number of people that do show up, which would make it even more tight. The state doesn't seem to be easing up on the number or the amount of specific equipment that needs assessment. So if anything, they're going to make us test more and more. So I just. Want to express that we do need that space.
And obviously all, everybody who's in this building, department heads and their supervisors will be involved in those conversations. So we'll definitely make note of all of that.
Yeah, I think that's an important part of the next phase. You know, a lot of this is concept work. There's a lot of details, validation, as we like to put, of how it's functionally going to work. And it is really like you even mentioned, and it's what we're seeing a lot more of, yeah, we're not buying into like, okay, we're going full in on this. It's like just the next step, like, okay, validate that, it's actually going to function, give me some costs, help me understand more before, you know, sort of, sort of a. A phased approach even to the design and understanding feasibility of it, you know, it's low cost to get the information you need to make good decisions. Yeah, those are all very valid points and I think that will be definitely stuff that amongst many other things work through in the, in this next phase.
There's probably one last thing then. So during this next phase, I mean, it's going to cause us to go back and rethink how we do our operations in this. Examples Lucas brought up, there may be other ways that we can do them. And it, it will be important for us to remember that just because we do something that way now, doesn't mean that's how we should or could do it in the future. Or maybe how we did it a hundred years ago. So I think we'll find some things that we could do more efficiently.
To the next half step or step?
Yes, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.